All right, we're good to go.
Now, we're all here. So it's my having quarrel and being six thirty P M on Wednesday, January third, twenty twenty four. Item one, I'll call the meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board in order. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions reopen meeting law pursuant to the governor's approval or supplement to budget bill. Temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law have been extended to March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Specifically, this final extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without harming public body physically present at a meeting location. And to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The language of this extension does not make any substantive changes to the open meeting law. Other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty first, twenty twenty three to March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely and shall address the questions through the chair of the board or the host who is Mr. O'Brien. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely this evening. I'm Patrick Tristler, the Chair, Mr. Raymond Ajemian, Mr. Michael McDonald, the Vice Chair, Mr. Stephen Geller, Ms. Astor Earlehouse, and we have one alternate member with us this evening, Ms. MJ Sturgill. And the following Bridgewater Town staff will also be in the stadium room for this evening. Mr. Robert Rulie, Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Shane O'Brien, Town Planner, Mr. Justin Jane, Assistant Town Planner, and Mr. Stephen Solari, Mr. Stephen Solari, the Board Executive. At this time, everyone's making some music. Now, the voice makes the unmuted to the whole meeting, and as I mentioned, in general, the projects represented makes it unmuted. If the project is a public hearing, it's a public comment. We actually use the chat feature to ask you questions by listening to your main and your address to the question. The Chair and the Host will ask questions in order. The House use to raise my hand feature in the distant menu can be unmuted from the post of the Chair. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. Turn the phones to now start learning to do this meeting. So this evening, we do have one public hearing this evening. We also, we listed zero corporate drives as a public hearing, but that, that is, there's just for business. So that's a public meeting, I guess. So the first public hearing we had this evening is one sixty eight, one eighty, two thirty two, and two forty, and two forty Broad Street, which I'm going to recuse myself from and turn over to Mr. McDonald.
Right, thank you, Mr. Driscoll. So we'll begin, I believe the applicant is here, Mr. Melzer, if you want to begin with, you're free to do so.
Yeah, but good evening, Mr. McDonald, members of the board. So just a quick update. The peer reviewer was, last time we met in December, peer reviewer was reviewing the drainage reports. We did get a comments back from the peer review, which our, our civil engineer, Boulder Engineering and John Cusich is with us tonight, provided responses to that review along with his team. I just also want to introduce tonight, we have with us on our team, myself, Mr. LaRusso, Jerry LaRusso, Joe Bertucca, in addition to John Cusich and the foundry owner, Tom Perkins is here as well. So those, those comments have been addressed by civil engineering. We have Mr. Cusich here, if you have any questions with respect to that. We also have been working with Shane and with Mr. Rulie. He's had drafted a set of conditions, which we've been through and spoken at length with your staff about proposed conditions. And I don't know what questions you may have, but I don't have any other formal presentation for you tonight, but I would ask you when we're done tonight to, to close the hearing and to approve the project with those conditions as drafted by Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Melzer, any board questions for the applicant at this point?
Could somebody just clarify what, what, where we are with, with regard to the roads going in and out? We had the issue of the, the exit entrance ramp by the post office at the last meeting. What's the status of that in your mind?
Well, I, I think you were talking about my mind, I'm not sure, but
I was.
Yeah, okay. It really was something that was left with the information from the, and recommendation from our traffic engineer, not to restrict those driveways, but that I think you, as members of the board, you were, were taking that under advisement. And I think that would have to become something that you have to, as a part of the decision making, make that decision.
Yeah, I just from, from my perspective, in, in some ways, I would just like to see the one entrance in and out. If we were to have the other two on the edges of the development, I, I would be against the one near the post office going in and out. It would just be an out in my mind, because that's a bad intersection. So that's just my feeling, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but that's my point.
Yeah, I think, I think the part, the question really was whether it was a left turn restriction. I think it was the, the two driveways, I think, were.
Yeah, in terms of, I guess, from the last meeting, from my recollection, we, you did have your engineer from, was it McMahon?
Yes, Bowman, actually.
Yes, he, yeah, he was on that meeting talking about, it was, and I don't believe elimination of driveways, but I think he made points about why restricting the left turn there wouldn't work out. And I think we had a fair discussion in terms of considering a restriction of a left turn there or to keep it as is.
So to, to, Mr. Chair, to piggyback off of this, this comment on that one drive, we did, we did hear from the traffic engineer. We did listen to his recommendations, but I believe I put it out there that I would say that after a year of occupancy, that they come back to this board and, and see if there's been any issues or problems of traffic, and then at that time, maybe revisit restricting a, a left-hand turn only. Just because we, we can't predict the future, we don't know what's going on across the street, things could change. But I, I, I see no real issue with that. And I'm basing that off of professionals, the traffic engineers who came and, and gave it to, gave us the, the input.
Yeah, and I think if there's going to be a problem, then everybody's going to want to solve it. So we, we don't have any issue with revisiting the issue after, after we've reached occupancy, at least some level of occupancy and, and everything's being used, so we can tell what's going on out there.
And, and just as a note as well, Mr. Chair, we do have a, a Rick, Rick Latini from Howard Stein Hudson here to discuss the peer review results as well. If you would like to discuss the stormwater aspects of this project.
Um, if I may, and I, I would, I would prefer Mr. Tanzy be here. We're going to discuss that. I, I don't feel competent to comment on, he should be here.
Well, we, we
he cannot be.
No, I understand he's on vacation this week, but the planning board with the fifty-three G higher hired Howard Stein Hudson to perform the review instead of D P W. So that's Tower Sign Hudson is here on behalf of the town on the planning board.
So they Well, we might as well hear the report in that case, to get it on the record. Do you read, Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
All right, Rick, if you are here. Um, where is he? Just sent him an email.
Uh, well, we wait for that to start anything from town staff on this project, but you'd like to, uh, spot up on her.
No, we, we provided a memo for staff for the board for considerations for decision language. The year post occupancy restriction at review wasn't included, but we'd be happy to include that as part of any conditions as well.
Yes, I think that absolutely has to be part of any decision language.
Sure, and let me just once again try for Rick Latini, said he called in. However, I'm trying to figure out who on here he is.
In fact, I don't know, but you, Mr. Jimmy, I'd like to see a, a five-year view yearly.
Can everyone hear me now? Sorry.
Is this you, is that you, Rick?
Yeah, sorry about that, um, my Zoom is not working on my computer, so I, I apologize, I had to call in my cell phone.
It's all right, we can hear you perfectly, Rick.
Great, well, um, uh, should I, should I run through the letter or just go through some of the high-level stuff? I don't know how far you guys actually want to go, because what, what it really is, um, they did provide me with some new test bits and some new responses I just got today, so I haven't gone through all of them yet. And I don't know that I'll be, you know, I'm, I'm not going to have a response letter in time for today's meeting, but if you're looking to close that, sort of like the opportunity to, uh, work with the engineer after the fact of the condition, if, if that's the way you want to go with that, but, um.
I think given the scope of the project, a, oh, right now would probably be appropriate.
Okay. Let's see, I'm trying to grab up my responses now, so. Yeah, so, um, is the engineer on too, or?
Yeah, John Cusick is here, John Cusick from Bowler is here, yes.
Okay, that way, if I, if I misinterpret something, he can, he can respond back. So once again, Rick Latini with Howard Stein Hudson, uh, sorry, I cannot log on to Zoom, I, I got a new computer, and of course Zoom is loading up right now, so, um, technology, um, so I'm just going to run through some of the, I did go through the letter as best I could for the tonight, so, um, I'll just go over a couple of the comments, um, one of them was, there's, there's a sewer easement that traverses the site, and one of the basin's berms is over it, which it may not be a problem to the sewer owner, I just wasn't sure. The, the sewer is like eleven feet deep, so it may not be an issue, so I, that's on the letter, you know, um, the record engineer acknowledged that the sewer reasons there, I don't know if the owner of the sewer would even care that the berms on top of it, but if they ever had to do maintenance, it would, you know, it'd be a little bit extra work, obviously. But at eleven feet deep, the future maintenance might be a, a, a lining job, so I just put that one out there. We had a lot of questions on the estimated seasonal high groundwater, but the engineer did go out this, this December of twenty twenty three and did additional testing, so, um, most of that did answer our questions as far as where the estimated seasonal high groundwater was. There is one basin in the back SMA Stormwater Management Area B three, that's in the back of the site, that it'd be good to do additional testing, and they, and the engineer was asking if that could be done during construction, and, um, we, we would recommend that town consider that just because the basin does have a deep cut, so it might be better to do that later when they have the equipment on site, and just to, just to verify the seasonal high groundwater elevation, it looks like it'll be okay, but we'd recommend just double checking that during construction, which the engineer has requested. Also, one of the basins out front, uh, Stormwater Management Area B four, which is a, when you look at the plans, it's the one in the lower left-hand corner. The seasonal high water groundwater ended up being a few inches too close to the bottom of the system, so they agreed they're going to regrade that to provide, to raise the bottom of that system about six inches, and, and we agree with that revision. We had one comment where there, um, we didn't, we didn't have the full rational method calculation, so these are the calculations that you'd size the, the, the pipe system. And the reason why we're looking for that is a few of these basins, um, I think it was four, five, and seven, maybe, they're all kind of interconnected, so the hydrologic model, it'll, um, it model, it models the first run of pipe out of the basin, but it doesn't model the pipe downstream, so we weren't able to see or determine if the pipe could carry, say, like the hundred-year storm or whatever the basins were designed for. So we actually request to be able to look at those calcs before approval, or at least before construction, if you wanted to condition it as such. Um, anyone feel free to stop me if I'm not being clear, by the way, so I'll just keep rolling around, keep rolling to keep this moving.
No, you, you're good, sir.
Okay. Another question we have is, uh, this is a drain area near Stormwater Management Area B seven, which is over to the right-hand side of the site. It was, um, this one is actually a detention basin. And it's really, you know, detention base is not really one of the BMPs you're supposed to use, uh, when you have a land use with higher pollutant potential loads, which this is due to the amount of, uh, the volume of traffic anticipated. So what we recommend upstream of that basin is maybe using, if they would consider a water quality u, a unit that has a media filter that can actually help remove not just total suspended solids, but like nutrients such as oil and grease and phosphorus, so. Once again, because this is a redevelopment project, there is a little leeway with that, but that would be, that would be a quick fix, and that would actually meet the standard five of the, uh, N S D P standards, which would be the, you know, they, they specify particular best management practices for, um, high, um, traffic areas. They, um, okay, they corrected the calc, I have, I wasn't able to run through it, but, um, they provided water quality volume calculations for zero point eight inches times the impervious, which meets the, um, the local stormwater management regulations, but it doesn't meet the one inch required by the N S D P for this land use with higher potential pollutant loads. So they did send new calculations showing that it does meet the one inch. I just have to double check those, um, and the reason being is they subtracted the roof drains from the calculations, which is fine, but if the roof drains and catch basins are going to the same water quality unit, I think it should be designed to treat the whole one inch from both sources. So I had to see if that was done, um, it, it might be as simple as disconnecting the roof, so it doesn't go through the water quality unit or the isolator rows for the subsurface infiltration systems.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt for a second?
Yep, sure, absolutely.
I'll be perfectly honest with you, this is beyond me. And I'm not sure whether I'm capable of even evaluating what's being said. It seems to me that, that we have, we're at a stage where we're almost ready to approve, but we still need to just clarify what's, what the peer review has done, and the town engineer should look at it, too. My suggestion would be that, um, that we postpone this to the next meeting, and then we could, to get everybody together, we just got this purview response a day or two ago. So I think that they could clarify some of these little things that have to be straightened out, and then once that's done, we could simply approve this or whatever, what conditions at the next meeting. I, I'm not sure, I'm ready to, to vote, uh, to shut the, the public hearing down, if there are still some, sounds like some engineering issues, minor maybe, but I'd like to see that clarified prior to, uh, the study, that's just my opinion.
I make complete agree with you, uh, Mr. Jimmin.
Yeah, uh, if I may, these are technical issues, which the, the, um, our, the stormwater technically is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. We're going to satisfy the, and have provided comments and additional calculations. I think that it can easily be conditioned on satisfaction of those engineering issues. I, I really don't, you know, as you say, Mr. Jimmy, and this is, these are highly technical issues that either, either there's either a yes or a no on, it's not something that the, the planning board really has to weigh in with respect to its discretion. So I, I would say, you know, let's, let's move on.
It, just to, just to talk on, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, may I speak?
No, yeah, of course, Mr. Brian.
I, I, I would just advise that we allow Rick Latini from Howard Stein Hudson to kind of explain some of the information that was provided as part of the peer review that was provided to the board a couple of weeks ago, um, and as well as allow Bowler Engineering, who did provide a response letter today, to respond to said comments and explain how those changes affect the current layout of the plan, if any, from a, uh, from a technical and a civil standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Brian, Mr. Jimmy, did you have, uh, something more, leave?
Well, if, if, if this is a conservation issue, I'm not sure why we're even talking about it, then. I mean, this, this, this type of a review, we, we always talk about in, in developments, and I see no reason why we can't straighten this out prior to our approval, and if we, we waited this long, I can't see any reason not to wait two more weeks, and, uh, and in particular have the town engineer also just to give a stamp or approval of everything. I don't see what the big deal is that we, it has to be pushed, uh, tonight.
Mr. Jimmy, and with all due respect, it's been three and a half years. That's, that's part of the issue here.
This project has not been in front of this board three and a half years.
Would you like me to, to, to give you the dates, Mr. McDonald?
Well, no, that, that, now, Mr. Melzer, that, that backs up my argument. If it's been three and a half years, what's two and a half more weeks, two weeks?
I, I would advise that we hear the peer review and the engineers out prior to kind of having this discussion. Uh, maybe things will change after hearing a little bit from the complete storm water review of the peer review and hearing a response from the applicant's engineer.
The level-headed, I think, Mr. Brian, why don't we do that?
Rick, are you around still?
Yeah, I just, um, to be honest, I had gone through the, the major points, a lot of the other things on the letter were construction-related, but, but things that I would like to see myself before it went into construction, so. Um, you know, so the main thing that I wasn't able to review was, um, that, you know, the new rational method calc to show the pipe sizing in some of the regrading, particularly with the raising, uh, the storm out area before, so. You know, so, because a lot of basically says that they, they will do it, so I haven't seen new plans or calc that I can just verify that these things have been done, so that would be my point, and it's not my place to say how you want to approve it, but I just like, some way, whether it's I review it before it goes to construction or during Concom, however you want to do it, but it'd be, I think it'd be good if I relooked at it with the new plans and calcs.
To Mr. Melzer's point, the, the planning board has no jurisdiction over this item, I mean, stormwater is the purview of the Conservation Commission, so although the planning board approved the peer review, the approval of the stormwater plan will be the purview of the Conservation Commission, so. I don't even know if that, you know, you can condition approval on anything related to stormwater where you don't have jurisdiction over it.
Uh, Mr. Rulie, we'd be fine with a, with a condition that we satisfy all stormwater requirements of the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate.
Well, I, I, I think you're gonna have to do that anyways, you, you know, from, from some of the things that, that I've heard, you know, I mean, water quality, you need to double check some calculations, I mean, it, it, it honestly sounds like it's kind of minor stuff, you know, there's raise a pipe, make it wider, water flow. I know that everything will need to go through, you know, Mr. Tanzy, I mean, we hire these guys to look out for the best interest of the town, and their comments, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's nothing earth-shattering about them, is that correct?
Uh, once again, this is Rick Latini, um, yeah, these, everything that I've seen is, is correctable, correct, that, that's right, there's nothing that would make the design infeasible.
And, and I'd say that, that, uh, you know, it's to the point where the, and, and I think that we should hear from, from Mr. Cusich and let him respond, but the plan, the civil plan, the plans that are before you showing the site, they don't have to change because of any of this, it's, it's verifying data, it's, it's making a pipe bigger or smaller. Um, it, it's not changing the plan that, that, uh, that's before you, so if, if I may, Mr. McDonald, if, if I could have Mr. Cusich sort of respond.
That's probably a little, I don't know if that's really correct, Mr. Melzer, I mean, I think you're gonna have to add notes in the plans for size of piping and depth and, and other things, I mean, I don't think.
No, I mean, I mean
It's mine, it's very minor is what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that the, that, the, the, the details, the, the written details and the notes aren't going to change. I mean, the buildings aren't going to move and the, and the roadways aren't going to move, that, that's
Uh, yes, Mr. Melzer, you may go ahead with your, uh, your other, uh,
Okay, John, you're up, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I know, I'm mute.
Rookie mistake, apologies. Thank you for, for, for the time, and thank you for the very thorough review, Rick, we really do appreciate that. So the, uh, the, the, the peer review was a very thorough, thorough review, uh, as, as I mentioned, and to, to reiterate, all of the, um, the comments in there are very easily addressable, there's nothing in there from, from my standpoint that, that causes concern or pause that would require a design, uh, change or modification. It's additional plan detailing, it's providing some, some calculations on pipe sizing, um, the high-level concerns that were raised relative to make sure that some of the pipe runs internal to the site were, were oversized, frankly, hundred-year storm size, uh, because they, they connected, we don't have an issue with that, and frankly, we, we agree with it, and that, that's kind of what we had, we just haven't provided the pipe size calculations, and the reason we haven't done that is because this does go to Concom, there's going to be tweaks, and I don't think you wanted a sixty-page plan set dropped on your desk again for, for minor tweaks uh, that are very easily, um, addressable, so as, as Mr. Melzer had mentioned, uh, we absolutely do not have an issue with making these changes, providing it back to your peer reviewer for review after the fact to make sure you agrees, because we've agreed with his comments, and we want to address them. We just think it makes more sense to condition it, because we're gonna have to go to the Concom, the Concom may have some, some comments, there's always comments here or there which might change a pipe run or something along those lines, and when you look at all the pipes on this plan, you know, changing one pipe run is dozens of sheets of paper, and I don't think it makes sense to, to go back and forth at that level of detail now, other than realize, instead of a pipe being fifteen inches, it might be eighteen inches, and I think the board has the ability to have their peer reviewer take a look at it, once we've gone through that process, to make sure that you're protected and feel comfortable in your end. So I, I would say the, um, the review was very thorough, there wasn't anything in there that, that I think was scary from, from, from my end, and, and, and we look forward to working with your reviewer to get the final sign off after we kind of go through Concom and make sure all is, all is good, but nothing will change by way of driveway locations, parking spaces, building locations, landscaping, it's really just pipe sizing and maybe raising a basin, um, six inches or so.
Thank you, Mr. Cusich. Uh, any, uh, further board questions? Where's that goes, or? Nope, doesn't look like anything. Mr. Geller?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Uh, any further, uh, staff commentaries, Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Rulie?
I'm good, thank you.
No, I just wanted to note that if anyone wants to look, I know board members have been sent the, uh, peer review by Howard Stein Hudson, as well as, uh, the response letter from Bowler, um, but those are available on our website. Um, and I just would ask that the board look at them, um, don't want to reiterate both comments, but, um, a, a lot of what was in the peer review, um, discussed pipe size, so that's just a little small changes onto the plan, um, as well as these, uh, the peer review uh, review is based on Town of Bridgewater Stormwater Standards, uh, as well as D P regulations. Um, but I'll, the, the, as Mr. Rulie alluded to earlier, uh, the ultimately, the Stormwater Authority in the town is the Conservation Commission, and this item will be before them for, uh, N O I um, in the future, however, the site was reviewed in terms of internal drainage for site plan review, um, and there was nothing there that was, there was nothing there notable that would, um, affect the site layout. Uh, I think the only things that were mentioned were grading of a certain basin, as well as the inclusion of, I believe it was an outlet in one of the basins in the rear. Um, so I think those are things that could be included prior to endorsement, based on just kind of the, uh, the small nature of those changes, um, but I'm happy to, um, answer any questions for the board on behalf of staff.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien. Uh, I believe now would be time to open up to public commentary, is that, uh, is that correct? All right, we'll do that, uh, if anyone in the public would like to, uh, comment, please, uh, raise your digital hand, or I believe you could put a message in the chat for Mr. O'Brien as well.
Of course, yeah, please raise your virtual hand. Of course, yeah, please raise your virtual hand um or say that you would like to speak in the chat now. Allow you to talk. All right. I do not see anyone in the chat, Mr. Chair, nor do I see anyone with virtual hands raised. I just wanted to note since the last meeting, I have not received any um correspondence uh regarding public comments for this project. Um, so we are up to date in regards to public comments for this project.
Okay, excellent. Uh, so I believe our next order business uh direct me from Mr. Brian, just to know the uh sharing things that would be closing the uh public hearing.
Yeah, I would leave, I would leave, I would leave that up to the board. I don't think there's any uh substantive substantial changes uh being made to the plan. Um, but I would leave, I would also probably ask if the board has any additional comments for the matter. So I wouldn't want, I would advise probably that the board the board provides some input and comments prior to uh the closer closing of any public hearing. But uh I don't see any changes being made to the plan at the time.
Excellent. Thank you. I I agree with that. Uh, any more board comment? Personally, I still agree with Mr. Jimmy and I would like our own engineer to uh review these uh stormwater uh details, but uh other than that pretty much good to go on this one.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I I think I'm okay with with one of the conditions being that um you know, that they match up with the peer peer review and and comply with with what the peer review wants, who's looking out for the best interest of the town. Um, like I said, basically, everything that they're talking about is underground. You're not going to see it anyways. We just want to make sure that it's gonna work properly. And it really does fall under Concom. And I guess the applicant seems to be pretty good, pretty uh you know, with doing all the changes, with not not pushing back on anything. And I think, you know, they're not gonna get that permit anyways unless everything complies. So I I'd like to just see that condition added.
Yeah, I don't disagree with together. I I can live with it either way. Uh, I mean, I I would feel a little more comfortable if uh our own engineer reviewed it, but uh I bet I could actually go for the the condition uh as you described.
I would, I well, I would just advise that based on the size of the project and having discussions with uh Mr. Tansy as well is that there there was a comfort in terms of um the amount of review for this project. So being as a larger project and board members who have read all the plan sets, you know, that was part of the reason that we did have peer review for this project um was for a outside consultant to um be able to utilize time that Mr. Greg Tansy hasn't been able to per se review the project or provide comments to the board um and allow for uh a diff- a different qualified engineering company to review that on behalf of this board. Um, you know, we only have one town engineer. Um, you know, we do have other staff over in the engineering department. However, they are limited with other projects that are going on in the site. So i- in the case of this project, we felt that um utilizing the fifty-three G in Howard Stein Hudson would be sufficient in terms of review as they reviewed this project under Town of Bridgewater regulations, similarly that similar regulations that Mr. Uh Greg Tansy would review as.
Excellent point, Mr. Brian. Thank you very much.
I think uh, Mr. Chair, I think I'd also like to see another condition about revisiting traffic when they are probably, I would say, around seventy-five to eighty-five percent capacity.
Uh, that's an excellent point, Mr. Geller. I was actually uh thinking that earlier. Uh I know Mr. Jimmy had suggested a uh a one-year traffic review in a previous meeting. I would actually personally expand that to a once a year for five years.
No, no.
Okay.
I mean, the traffic, once once the traffic is established, a- a- any traffic changes are gonna be due to outside conditions. Um, a- and uh one thing you have to remember is that uh two of these driveways, I believe, are in state jurisdiction. So we're we're getting so whatever changes you would want, they would be things that would have to be applied for to the Department of Transportation for to the driveways. Um, so uh we're, it certainly makes sense that you got to take a look at once the things are are up and running, but uh I I don't think it's reasonable and no other project that I know of and have ever been involved in, and I certainly don't think any other project in Bridgewater has been subject to a five-year yearly review of traffic. So I don't think that's reasonable.
I appreciate that, Mr. Melzer. You you did mention um outside factors, uh which has been somewhat of a component of this project as we are aware that uh the property across the street might be ongoing soon to be in changes, uh which is something we've tried to factor in during this approval process. Uh, so that is why um I feel it may be appropriate for a more prolonged traffic study on the area. Uh, would you be more comfortable with the two or three-year process? Would that maybe be in the middle here somewhere?
Honestly, uh, you know, I think that a certain amount of time after um we reach a a eighty-five percent capacity or or whatever number you think is appropriate, maybe six months after that or a year after that is is probably gonna give you the benchmark. Um, and and we're going to be able to see what what's going on. Um the outside factors, the other projects like we had too are gonna have to deal with whatever the traffic situation is at that time. Um, you can't hold us responsible for what other projects do or don't do. Um so I guess I I I push back on that. I'd say one one review after we know what's going on and how this project is affecting the traffic.
I agree. That that that's reasonable. So would you be okay with conditioning it to an occupancy then? Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Geller.
So, yeah, I I mean, my, uh, uh, I mean, I I honestly, I don't think that the first two entrances, the your two driveways are fine. I I think the more concern is the one that's very on the end that will probably get the least use of all. The one that loops around behind the building that comes out by the post office.
Yeah.
If I if I would have to guess, that's probably gonna be the 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 lesser of all your entrances that are used. I don't have a problem with your other entrances.
Yeah, that's 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 an exit only, Mr. Geller, actually.
Right, but right now you you can exit left and right. So I, you know, my my concern is if you're gonna get out over years, my concern, my concern is is people trying to take the right coming out of there.
Well, I I think I think that the review would have to take take a look at the entire site and and all of the driveways.
I just like to add that your late summer, early fall, before you even begin to do site work, and you're probably two years out for construction. And we're hoping to have new zoning in in form-based code adopted in the next month or two. We'll know, we'll have a pretty good idea if something is gonna happen across the street in that period of time. And you know, any future traffic study should be coordinated with what's happening over there and what we what those plans look like. So I mean, none of this is you know, imminent that we're gonna be looking at it this summer or this fall. I mean, we could be eighteen months to twenty-four months out.
I would also advise that we do have a trans- to transportation committee in town that uh Bob Rully is on, as well as the Chief of Police, Acting Fire Chief, uh Roadway Superintendent. Um, so even even beyond a scope of decision language within this document, um, there is still a transportation committee within town that can provide input to public safety and other traffic patterns within town. So you know, I think that to Mr. Geller's original proposal, I think that's an advisable uh approach, but beyond that, we do have a committee in town that can work with developers, work with property owners in terms of looking at signage, uh do not enter one ways, et cetera, et cetera, um within the Town of Bridgewater.
Excellent. Thank you both. All right. So to uh refine my proposal here, uh, Mr. Meltzer, would you be agreeable to a traffic study after your building has uh reached a run with your number eighty-five percent capacity?
Well, I I guess uh, yeah, so so maybe it it needs to be at a period of time after we reach eighty-five percent. Um, just so that data can so that the patterns can establish and and I guess I guess I'd like to get some clarification. I I think that when this was brought up, um it was mentioned that it was uh we would, we would come back before the board in case they had any concerns. And and so I guess what is the the question is or the the request for clarification is what is it that will be happening at that trick point? Is it that we will we will be scheduling a he- a meeting before the board to discuss whether any uh further action needs to be taken? Is that the the condition or is it something else?
Yeah, Mr. Meltzer, you are, you are correct. I I my original point to that was I'd like to hear from, you know, safety-wise, police, how many accidents have been in the area since that has been open since you're eighty-five percent full? Has it caused any any more um, you know, bad accidents, traffic? Um, tie-ups, you know, I I don't, I don't know if it really, I mean, you are gonna have other factors three years down the line. And then I don't know how long it's gonna take it to ramp up to eighty-five percent, even if you ramp up an eighty-five percent two years later. Um, I mean, I hope it won't be two years later. You you you're talking, you're talking five years out to ask you to do a a full, a full-blown traffic study. I, you know, I just I guess I just want to make sure that the inlets and outlets aren't aren't causing uh major accidents all the time. You know, how many, how many calls have been down there and anything else? And that's where, Mr. O'Brien, you you come into terms with, you know, we have a traffic committee in transportation and police and fire are part of that. So um it's just a concern that 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 I had and wanted to point out. And, you know, three years down the pipe, a lot can change. Five years down the pipe, a lot can change. So um that was, that was my intent. My intent was that, not to, not to, not to do a a full-blown traffic study because that takes everything else into factors.
Are we proposing to have Mr. Meltzer come back before the board at that time or to go uh to to meet with the traffic committee? What is? I think that's the question that he's asking.
Part of the question. And and I don't have any, I I think it probably makes sense to have a condition that says you know, within three months after we reach eighty-five percent capacity. Um uh, the board will hold a hearing to determine if any further study is necessary um with regard to the uh turning restrictions on the driveways or something like that.
I'd be agreeable to that, Mr. Meltzer. That that's that's more of what I was trying to uh say.
You got that, Shane?
Yeah, as long as Steve Meltzer sends me an email when he's exactly eighty-five percent, that sounds good to me.
Well, you can make that requirement.
Sure thing. Yeah, my only note on that is that we don't, we don't, it's it's difficult to uh do occupancy on certain units uh when it's, we're looking for a typical, I'm I'm approving they're signing off of the occupancy of the the building and dip more cases than not. Um, but I'm fine with that eighty-five percent. We can have a continuing conversation um with that, but I don't see an issue with that.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I think that's a that's a solid middle ground uh where to do it. Okay.
That's it for me.
I just have a, I just have a note, Mr. Chair, um to the people watching right now. Um for in regards to the public hearing, I'm getting a lot of singular messages directly to me in the chat asking questions. If you were part, if you would like to participate in the matter, do not send me questions. Please talk to the planning board members, asking questions, and we can advise it during the meeting. Um, I just want to note that on the record.
Why don't we uh open it up for poll a comment again then uh before we close this meeting? Uh, so if you'd like to speak, uh, please do raise your hand. Uh, you'll be called upon, Mr. O'Brien. And you will have uh the floor to uh raise your questions or concerns.
Yes, raise your virtual hand or post in the public chat if you would like to speak on this project, please. We have a virtual hand raised of Janet's iPad.
At your will, Mr. Brian.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I was commenting in the chat. I thought you could do either one. I didn't realize.
I apologize. I I mistakenly said that uh during my first uh introduction for the public comment.
Okay, because I I was surprised. I just was um and I didn't hear if you had made a decision because I had to step away for a second uh as far as whether you're closing or not, but I was just commenting that I was pleased to hear Ray, I I always say your name wrong, so I'm just gonna say Ray, is you know, pushing to not close it today to the public and to take the extra two weeks to just go over the information that you just got before making any decisions. Um, I don't think it's the applicant's decision whether or not you you know, wait or not. Two weeks doesn't seem that long. I realize and I appreciate that they've been waiting a long time for a decision. But you got to make sure that it's right and that there's no regrets. Um, things need to be right. No one should be feeling pressured to making any decision tonight. Or even, you know, even if it's just a matter of closing it to the public, you shouldn't feel pressured on that. And I just feel that you know, taking that extra time is worth it so that there's no second guessing, no rumors. You shouldn't have done this. You shouldn't have done this and you 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 crossed all your I's and T's and make sure that it's done right. That's the most important thing. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Hanson, you do you have any comments on the context of the site plan?
Um, well, not, I I just like um I don't know how to word my feelings on it. I just want to make sure that um, I I don't, I have a little concern with mixed use and and, you know, the I just keep it small versus big as far as um uh residents, you know, the um, and I I just want to make sure that it it fits into that place. I'm sorry, I don't have a specific plan. A question on a plan. I just want to make sure that it's done right and fits in with the environment and ke- keep in mind everything else in that traffic area is gonna be very tough. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mrs. Hanson.
All right, Mr. Mr. Chair, we have a uh, we have Dr. Hunt.
Evening. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the discussion on the traffic and potential conditioning. I will remind people that a single measurement is an N of one. It is not statistically valid. Therefore, you need to think about in the condition what time of year, maybe the university's in play, what time of day, and possibly the duration of that traffic study. Because if you only do it once in the wrong time of the year, you're gonna get bad information. It should be repeated several times over a course of period to be statistically valid. Thank you.
You, uh, we also have a Donna Jewell um available. And just a note on that, we we have also received a traffic study from the applicant noting different times uh prior to this, but I understand. Uh, yep, so we have Donna Jewell with her hand raised.
Hi, Donna Jewell, Keith Place, Bridgewater. I just have one question. Has the thirty percent commercial requirement been wrote, been waived?
So there's.
No, ma'am. Not at this point. Uh, it may be if the project is allowed to proceed, but uh it is still in place at this point. Uh, as part of the approval, if it does get approved, uh, that may be waived. But the requirement is still in place.
The requirement is still in place. Do we know, um, or could you update me on what the developer is requesting in terms of a percentage of commercial space?
I believe at this point it's fourteen percent. Is that correct, Mr. Brian?
Um, I believe it is less than thirty, but I think it's around that twelve or fourteen percent range.
Is that correct, Mr. Meltzer? I just want to make sure we're running.
Going to, I think, Shane, that you you did a did the analysis. I'm looking through your, I think it was in your memo. Um, so you broke it down by building, one building twelve percent, another building seventeen percent, the other building thirty-one percent.
Yeah, we broke it down. Yeah, we broke it down by building, so it's twelve, seventeen, and thirty-one percent.
Yep, page two of your memo. I'm sorry.
Of course, Mr. Jimmy.
He had no commercial. I thought we just have two buildings with commercial. Can somebody clarify that?
That was my understanding as well, yes.
There there is that the only uh perhaps the commercial at twelve percent. Um I I don't know how we got to those numbers. Maybe Shane can explain those, but we do have the. Um the the common area and the the leasing office.
The leasing, the leasing office isn't residential. It'd be considered as part of commercial, I believe, as part of the analysis that was provided to us.
The leasing office for some of its own building counts as a commercial development?
If we're not using it for residential. Uh if we don't put it there, we have to put it in another office building, so I think that's only.
I I understand it's the.
That's common practice.
Well.
Well, it is common practice.
I believe you, Mr. Really, I believe.
The numbers are what they are. You can redo the calculations and come out with a dumb a different number, but the the. The square footage is our as we requested. Um and it's it's less, it's significantly less than thirty percent. No doubt about it. Um because the market won't support thirty percent and we can't do a project if it is thirty percent or anywhere near.
But I think it also needs to be noted that in lieu of the thirty percent. The developer has committed to make ten percent of the units affordable uh with a monitor. Uh which is a benefit to the town as we're trying to create more housing opportunities.
Agreed. That is a uh. Great concession. Um Mrs. Jewel, uh I believe you were still speaking when uh. The applicant answered. Do you have anything else?
Well, just if you could clarify for me, what is is it twelve to fourteen percent overall when you mix the twelve of fifteen and the thirty together? It comes out to twelve to fourteen percent for the total project? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it'd be about twelve percent if you divide uh the amount of commercial square footage over the amount of residential square footage.
Of total residential, okay. It just seems contrary to our original master plan. We were looking to bring retail and commercial development into town to attract other people to come. To our town. Now we have a big project like this with minimal square footage for commercial retail development. Disappointing. That's all.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewel.
Do we have anybody else with their hands raised? Or?
I don't see any hands raised, but if we want to give the ten seconds or so, just for anybody else.
I'll let him soak it in. I don't see anyone else, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right, we'll proceed then. Uh so I believe at this point we would uh. Need a motion to either continue, close the public hearing, I don't know what the board's feeling uh. We have to uh proceed somehow, so. Anyone like to take the leap on that one?
I I'll I I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I can second that.
Okay.
Second by Miss Rojas.
Thank you, Mr. Really. Uh. Okay, so we'll take the uh any discussion? Nope, all right, we'll take the roll call vote then. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mrs. Rojas?
Yes.
Mrs. Spigot?
Sorry, my mic was muted. Uh yes.
And I mean, yes.
Public hearing is closed.
Okay, so do we want to continue this and take another couple of weeks to evaluate this? Do we want to? Try to get something moving tonight? Uh I don't know how you guys are feeling. What would you like to do?
I know that some people have stated that, you know, we should wait, but after hearing Mr. O'Brien's. Uh clarification on why we received a peer review from an external consultant. That made me more confident in going with what was received through that peer review, so. I would suggest that we. You know, just make a condition which Mr. Jimmy had mentioned before, as long as we uh. As long as Mr. Meltzer. Meets the conditions through that that were given through that peer review. And also uh. Provide that uh traffic study after it's met the eighty-five percent. What the team, what the group agreed?
Uh, Mr. Rojas, I believe uh we're talking with this this Meltzer, it wouldn't necessarily be a traffic study. We would do an evaluation of whether a traffic study is necessary. At that point. Uh which may result in the traffic study, but uh I don't want to commit them to something. At the time. Personally, oh, yes, Mr. Spigot, please, go ahead.
I have a question based upon the discussion that we have had thus far. I know that there's a desire to see some type of. Speaking of an evaluation for traffic at at a certain point in time. Uh I guess I'm curious and perhaps maybe you could educate me or even Mr. Meltzer could educate me or Mr. O'Brien could educate me. Why at that point, if a project's already been done and the traffic study that they had done before? While changes will have occurred likely by then, because obviously things will be changing regardless whether or not things get built in one place or another. What purpose does it serve if we eventually find out? There's either not a lot of traffic or there's too much traffic, considering it's a state road. The difficulty would be is trying to ask the state to make changes to the roadway. At that point, it would be an issue of traffic on the roadway, not necessarily the site. Of the project, unless I'm wrong. And someone is more than welcome to correct me as I'm obviously still quite a neophyte at this. But my question is is why? What not why, but the purpose and desired outcome of any type of empirical study. On traffic after a project is done and has already been approved. And everything else is going on after that point. I get the frustration with it. I understand that downtown is. Somewhat trafficked at this point, but certainly the town is most likely going to look at things where traffic management is going to become more important. And. To that end, I I guess I'm not really seeing. Why we should caveat what actually we take as a board. On the possibility of having to do another traffic study after one that's already been done by the project opponent. Has already been pro-provided to us. So I'm I'm kind of looking for a bit of a clarification because. I feel a bit frustrated by that and I could certainly tell in the conversation. That the developer, the opponent was sounding frustrated from it, so maybe I'm maybe I'm coming from a point of um. Less information, but it certainly would help me in my decision-making processes to have that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So so MJ, I don't I don't I I don't think we're asking them to do a traffic study. You know, my my. Suggestion to that was to to have them reevaluate. You know, my my main concern was one entrance. The other two I I I'm really not concerned about. It's the other one that's close to the post office. My concern was traffic crossing over the main road. Now. It's just like the Cumberland Farms. That when you come down eighteen, it says no left turn, yet we know people always take it, but. When that was designed and originally built, I'm sure that those signs were not originally there. So something must have triggered it, whether it be. Whether it be the the transportation committee, the safety board. Goes down and says, okay, we need to change some of the traffic and make the developer put a sign up. I'm just trying to be a little proactive by saying. If we're having any issues, what can we do to fix it?
Right, and and maybe just to maybe just turn restrictions and maybe signs. Uh I think that we're just offering to. Actively participate in the process, but Shane has something else to say.
It does, it does. No, I raised my hand and it detected it and they put the symbol up. That's so, that's wicked weird.
All right.
Try it sometime. Um I think in the context of the this review, um. It the question is that left turn out of the uh the fast food uh that one entrance. So looking at it from, I guess, an occup- occupancy standpoint. I think the concern is primarily coming through that drive-through window. So I think people that are gonna be utilizing that drive-through window are gonna be the ones utilizing left or right turns. So I think we should look at it from an occupancy of that. Commercial site, um whether it be a a fast food location or some sort of. Drive-through location there. Um and then you look at it in terms of if in the future we want to. Restrict left turn access there after a year of that being open. If that that seems sensible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brian. Uh does that answer your question, Mrs. Spigot?
It's not more of a qual, it's not more of a quantitative approach in terms of counting everything, but just I guess in terms of. Uh evaluating it from a uh an eye perspective or um. I guess whatever perspective we can review it in terms of discussing it with uh the transportation committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it does satisfy at least my need for that clarification.
Okay, excellent. All right, let's just go down the list here. Mr. Geller, anything further from you?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Mr. Jimmy?
Okay.
Mrs. Rojas?
I'm fine.
Mrs. Spigot?
Could you repeat the question again? My connection.
Just I'm just checking if there's any further discussion.
No, none for me, sir.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so uh what do we want to do here then? I I believe it's the chair. I can't make any motions, so uh.
I I just want to, I guess a comment, um you know, I did provide a memorandum to the board um in terms of possible decision language to consider. Um I know that we've had other um discussions there, so I I would just recommend on any motion that they would include. Um such language um as part of the. Part of my conditions, condition twenty-nine uh includes recommended changes from the peer review consultant um should be implemented in the. Final plans prior to endorsement. Um that would cover um. Uh Mr. Latini's comments coming from the uh. The peer review um. As well as the expectation that these changes be implemented prior to uh the endorsement of the plan. Um I would also ask that there are have been requested waivers for this project. As well as this approval is a special permit. Or a mixed-use project, a site plan review. Um for this project as well as a couple of special permits or. Um I believe it's a drive-through locations here. Um it's what if, I'll have to pull the agenda up, but it was uh properly um. Let me just pull up my memo quickly. I apologize.
Why why are you doing that, Mr. O'Brien? Uh for the amendments, do those have to be voted on individually or can they be voted on as a package?
In terms of site plan review, special permits uh and waivers?
Yes, sir.
Uh I would say we could vote if it depends on how you want to do it. Um we could package them all together. Um but I would say that in the memo packet that it provided today, I noted the. The requested special permits, waivers and findings include the following. Um that would be uh no loading zones, um the allowance of multiple buildings on the lot. A permit for mixed-use development. A reduction of request for commercial development equal to thirty percent based on exceptional circumstances. Uh parking area shall be designed behind the building and not adjacent to the street. Um large parking areas as noted on um. Plan, um that's a a special, I think it's a waiver or a special permit from section four point four four. Um the allowance for um. Mixed-use buildings for screenings of electronic units uh in terms of height restrictions. Uh table of use regulations um allowing for drive-up. Window facilities incidental to permitted principal uses. As well as um the applicable waivers um as noted through the performance standards for larger larger projects. So I think I covered all the bases um. There. Um so if you want to package them all together. As well as other decision language, I'm happy to uh include that.
Thank you. I'm gonna I'm gonna tap into uh Mr. Jimmy's knowledge here. Uh he's been doing this a long time. Uh Ray, I believe those are usually just packaged together as. Part of the approval process. Okay, perfect. Okay, so that uh brings us back to uh square one, I suppose. Anyone like to, personally speaking? I'd like another two weeks to review this. Uh sorry, Mr. Meltzer. Uh that's a. I would just like a little more review time, given the scope of the project, but uh somebody wishes to do elsewise. We can put it to a vote.
So do we want to, do we want to put put the vote, all the the group thing, or is it gonna be all part of this one big vote?
I talked about the um.
All the waivers and everything.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just do a most one package, uh just part of the approval vote.
So you're looking for it as two separate votes, Mike, or one?
Uh well, that depends on what we need to do. If you want to continue it, uh obviously it'd be one vote. If you want to uh. Try to get an approval or denial tonight, uh. I believe that would also still be one vote, but.
Right, that's that that's fine, so um. You know, I I I guess I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve with all the language that came in the game out today. Um from Shane, I would also like to add the. Uh revisiting some of the traffic stuff when they're eighty-five percent like we discussed. Uh I'm okay with the waivers. And. I trust because we are the ones that that hired. The third part of review, I trust that everything will comply plus number twenty-nine, like you said, Shane. Is in there. Um so I I would like to make a motion to approve and move this forward.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I can second.
Mr. Rojas? Any discussion? Mr. Jimmy?
Are you asking for a vote?
Oh, oh, sorry, no, I thought you were leaning forward to uh, okay.
No, I I um I agree. Mr. Geller said, Mr. Geller said things nicely, although the word trust bothers me, but other than that, he said the great stuff.
Okay, we'll take the roll call then. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mrs. Rojas?
Yes.
Mrs. Spigot?
Yes.
And I'm a no. Motion passes for one.
Thank you very much, everybody. You will be seeing us again. I appreciate all the hard work on this and uh we're really excited to move forward. We have a lot of work to do, but. Um thank you. Happy New Year and good luck on your next hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Meltzer. Have a good year as well.
All right, I will ask for uh Pat to come back and.
I'm catching like.
You didn't miss anything.
Just a slight modification to downtown, don't worry about.
All right, so um next time we get to the top of public hearings, um I missed that, I apologize. It should be a public meeting because the public hearing is closed um for zero corporate journey. This is a public uh meeting, zero public drive, eighty-three, lot eighty-five, propose a top of claim offer, join the tell to LLC. Site plan review approval uh so it's section ten point six, section six point zero. And nine point four and 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 next speed table views uh table of natural refineries. Twenty, and it was noted that the agenda of the public hearing was closed.
I must recuse myself from this part of the meeting due to a conflict of interest.
Oh, Pat, we're having a difficult, a little diff- difficulty hearing you. Not really, no. Not really, no. No.
I switched speakers. Is that better, Shane, or no?
Uh, you speak up?
Is that better than, or no?
Hey, you sound softer, but more clear.
How was that? Is that better?
I guess if you just talk loudly, I think you'd be good.
Alright, so we, we have, we have, yeah, I just speak loudly, please. Okay, yeah, it's funny, it's funny when I choose.
How was that?
It sounds good. You sound good.
That's good, yeah?
Perfect.
There's three different headsets I can choose and they all seem to work. I just don't know which one's the best. Alright, so, you know, we're in the deliberation period of this zero corporate drive. We've received a lot of correspondence. We've received a lot of testimony from both sides. So that I guess we get to discuss the issues, the the findings and the conditions and to take a vote on the project, so. I'll open up to the board for comments. If we want to start to address what concerns the board have, we can interact with staff, but the public and the applicant are not allowed to participate in this, in this deliberation, so. At this point, I'll open up to the board for their their thoughts and if people want to put their concerns out there, we can address them and perhaps address the draft edition by my students. Everybody hear what I said?
Yep, oh, we're gonna start, Mr. Ruly or Mr. O'Brien. What is the town staff's opinion on the fifty-foot first two-hundred-foot buffer? In the old special, was special permit, I believe.
Can I go, Mr.? I wouldn't really have an opinion on it. I think from the last meeting, it was clear with the counselor, Colin Bodos, I'm probably butchering the name after saying it a bunch of times today, that the zoning ordinance change in twenty-fourteen specific to planned development districts mention at least a fifty-foot landscaping buffer minimum within a one oh four. So in the case of that, it's pretty clear in terms of the language there as well as that was provided by us by the applicant and attorney Ed Brennan regarding that language in terms of the allowance of a minimum of a fifty-foot landscaping buffer is still noting that there is a two-hundred-foot buffer between building and the roadway.
Mr. Ryan, why do you believe that supersedes the two-hundred-foot that was laid out in the initial plan?
Because the Marriott was built with that in mind. I know the Marriott isn't a five-foot story building, but the bill, the other hotel that was built onsite conforms to that language at on that was completed in twenty-fourteen. So that was built to those twenty-fourteen zoning standards. I understand the nineteen eighty-eight permit states one thing in terms of the landscaping buffers, however, it doesn't supersede future zoning ordinance changes within certain districts and certain uses and certain setbacks that may be amended time and time again afterwards based on our zoning ordinance.
I, I just personally would think that the specific approval for such a large project would take precedence over future changes. Surely that buffer was put in for a reason. It kind of was.
I'm sure it was. I'm sure it was in nineteen eighty-eight. But it's per, things obviously do change through zoning ordinances over time. There's allowed uses, there are disallowed uses over time. So we, not only do we review a project based on in nineteen, you know, the initiation and the creation of a planned development district, but we also hold it to current day standards. If we were to hold certain projects to nineteen eighty-eight standards in some cases, you know, we would be building it on old stormwater regulations, old certain regulations, which doesn't allow us.
Isn't that quite a pickle though? Because we are holding the site to nineteen eighty-eight standards. That's the only reason that even on.
I'm saying we're holding it to a standard where the nineteen eighty-eight special permits created that planned development district. And the use.
Oh, no, no, of course, I was, I was telling.
Well, I look at my list of questions tonight and think, I think the toughest thing I'm struggling with is as well.
Difficult to hear you, Matt.
I think, I think the diff- can you hear me right now?
Yes, sir.
You can hear me fine?
A little better.
So the, the difficulty I have of, of the, of the tough, the tough part I have is, is making sure that we do it right for both sides and it's fair for both sides. And when I looked at, when I looked at the, the nineteen eighty-eight decision and I looked in the findings, they clearly were more focused on the fact that they wanted to make sure that, that the, the views, it says the board reviewed the mixture uses, internal circulation, that goes on to say the visual impacts from adjacent ways and neighbors. And then it goes on and, and finding one to say that a two-hundred-foot minimum buffer, buffer strip of indigenous side with native green trees shall be established. And then there's also a, a condition later in the document. And then you look at you know, the zoning change that was made. And again, I struggle with this because it does say, it says in nine, nine point four point seven. It says that the project area shall include a fifty-foot minimum depth, fifty-foot minimum depth of the strip adjacent public ways has to substantially screen the uses of the premises for adjacent properties. So I always think the intent of the buffer strip whether it be fifty feet or two hundred feet was to substantially screen the uses from from the from the adjacent properties. And then looking at Attorney Brennan's letter, you know, he, he confirms that they didn't need that fifty-foot change. But then I looked at six point three, performance standards for larger projects and performance standard thirteen on page twenty-nine says we are feasible, which is feasible on this property because there is line for the right. The planning board may require parking areas to be located on the side of the buildings as to provide appropriate setting for the buildings in the context of the site. But then I go back to the intent, right? And what I think the intent is, and I think that the intent of the two-hundred-foot buffer was to provide substantial screening. So I guess, I guess my question is to staff, maybe Shane can answer this, but Mr. Ruly. Is do we think that based on what they've provided us in terms of landscape plans, do we think that a five-story building can be substantially screened with a fifty-foot minimum depth buffer? Because I don't think the intent was just to have two-hundred-feet days as a limit there, was to provide screening, right? So can we provide that same level of screening in that sixty feet that, that we would have provided in the two-hundred feet? And that, that'll help me make my decision because I, this is a much larger building than what was proposed initially in the master plan with a much smaller buffer strip. And the intent of that buffer strip in that smaller building was to create that visual appropriateness, so to speak, as well as to provide screening from the, the adjacent, adjacent properties. So I think if, 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 if staff thinks it could be substantially screened, what substantially means to them is that would help me make my decision because there is a lot of conflicting language. And I don't want to be uncareful to the developer or to the, the neighbors, and I want to do it right. So I, I don't know if that is a question or a statement. I don't know if you want to take it Shane's bar or, or take us.
I think we would have to see a more detailed landscape plan for the fifty feet. I mean, obviously, you know, as Shane indicated, you're two hundred feet to the building. But I think if the applicant was willing to give us a more detailed landscape plan, we could apply on whether we think it's sufficient, but I also want to point out, and we've mentioned this before, that there was a provision within the special permit in nineteen eighty-eight that anticipated that there was going to be changes, either economic or otherwise. And that if a substantial change to the original master plan was submitted, that the planning board had thirty days to review that. And that never happened. So by default, you know, everything that's happening now is allowed because the planning board never took any action. Well, there wasn't either. So, I mean, but I also think that the ordinance change to the fifty feet supersedes be no different than, you know, the zoning amendment we're doing now for the central business district. I mean, zoning needs to be updated on periodic basis because economic conditions change. Things change. I mean, a lot of the zoning in New England is outdated. So, I mean, I would defer, I'm not an attorney, and I would defer to what Mr. Brennan's position was as an attorney. But I think, you know, requesting more detailed landscape plan is not outside of, and I can't speak for the applicant, but I think that would be a reasonable way forward.
Yeah, so I, I, I would actually tend to agree with that because if I also remember, they also agreed, I know we haven't seen a plan yet, but they also agreed to remove a row of pocketing, parking, which actually I believe took it from fifty feet to eighty feet.
Mr. Really, if I may, if the intent of the zoning shame was to apply to this master plan, why was the master plan itself not altered instead?
I can't speak for, I mean, I think we can agree that there are, have been a number of missteps, not by this planning board, but by the planning board historically.
I'm sure we've made some too.
But I mean, with, as a rela- as a perhaps, but as it relates to, to this special permit, I can't answer that, Mr. McDonald.
Could I just make clarification on this fifty feet? I mean, you, you, you're referring to it as a fifty-feet minimum. It's not a maximum, correct?
Uh, correct.
So if we say sixty feet, that would apply. We're talking, you're, you're talking about a minimum, not a maximum.
Right, but then you could ultimately say five hundred feet. I'm not saying beyond that. I'm just saying that.
I understand. I just want, I just wanted to clarify that, so.
Fifty, fifty feet meets the criteria. So it's not like they're requesting a waiver from that. It just meets the criteria. So they're going to.
And I understand.
Well, I believe Ray's point is that we determine the criteria.
That's right. We, we have, we have the ability to go over fifty feet.
I'm sorry, before you go with, with that, Pat, can I just address your previous one? In talking about the the screening, you know, whether it was a well-screened enough or not, the developer themselves has stated that they want this project to be visible. And have rebuffed several attempts by Mr. Jimmy, and I believe when it comes to tree clearing or relocating to make it less visible. I would argue therefore that the project is not well-screened if the developers' whole argument relies on it being visible.
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess I I don't know how they came up with the two-hundred feet, right? I, I don't know. I wasn't there. But I think the two-hundred feet was to provide, to provide that, that visual buffer, right? So I think that if we were to go down to fifty feet, they would have to demonstrate that they could still maintain that visual buffer that they could achieve in two-hundred feet, right? Because that, I don't think somebody just came up with that number saying, hey, let's, let's, let's push, let's push parking lots back two-hundred feet. I think they had a landscape plan that demonstrated that two-hundred feet was what was necessary to provide the adequate screening. And I, and if, and our, our zoning says now it's a fifty-foot minimum, but it has to be substantially screened. So then I guess you get into what is substantially. I mean, that's, that's, that's what, I mean, my, my biggest issue, like I said, is, is I'm pretty much fine with everything. If they could, you go to front town for their review and they can handle the more of the environmental stuff, but I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing and we'll be fair to the bodies and we'll be fair to the, the developer. So, so it says, it says the project shall include a fifty-foot minimum depth buffer adjacent to public ways. So to, so, so as to substantially screen the uses of the premises from adjacent properties. So I think if we, I think if we do go down to fifty feet or if we go down to a hundred feet, or if we keep at two-hundred feet, they have to demonstrate through a plan that it is substantially screened. And, and I, and the one other question I have is that we did, that Mr. Ruly pointed out, we make zoning changes all the time. We just, we just didn't make one recently by developing plate standards for larger projects. And I guess my question to staff is, do you think that, that, that does not apply? That we can ask for packing to be on the side or outside and see front yard step back? Do you think that does not apply in this case? It, it does apply.
I would say that it would be difficult to incorporate this in this project in regards into the parking on the side. However, I do think it's appropriate to discuss one, the eighty-foot screening and perhaps a tree protection plan or additional screening to be incorporated within that landscape buffer within one oh four and the, the landscape buffer provided by the applicant. I think that's an appropriate measure under screening in our performance measures that the board can and should just consider as part of this project, whether it be through tree protection or incorporating new trees into the project. But I don't think that the, the parking situation is, is appropriate as designed at this time.
Okay, so. So if, if we're looking to have the project substantially screened within that eighty feet, what are, what is substantially screened? What, I mean, what, what are our expectations?
I don't see how you can substantially screen a project from the developers telling you visibility is their main goal. Or one of them.
Well, I mean, I mean, that's why we're going to have to condition it, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's what's required. So, I mean, they can have visibility by a sign at the entrance. They can do a number of things to enhance their visibility, but as far as the project goes, if, if you know, we can't say that the special permit applies, but, but the two-hundred-foot doesn't apply, but the water applies. And we can't say the zoning applies to the fifty feet, but it doesn't have to be substantially screened. I mean, we have to pick a direction as a board and go in that direction. Are we relying solely on the, on the special permit? Are we, are we going to rely on the fifty-foot and they gave us the extra row parking? And are we going to have that be substantially screened? Are we going to rely on the, the the, the performance standards, the larger properties and that for the side? I just I, I think, I think the intent of the two-hundred feet in the small building was to provide that visual appropriateness. So it's right there. To, to the adjacent properties. And I think that the other hotel that's there, I think it was three stories, so it's not as impactful. This is going to be a very tall building. And I just wonder if, if that is, if, if we add, if we say, hey, we're okay with the eight, or we're okay with the hundred, and we're okay with the fifty, what is substantial screening to, to staff and into this board so we can set some expectations for what we're looking for?
It, it, Mr. Chairman, it seems to me, first of all, you're not going to screen a five-story building that close to the street. I mean, that's it's almost ridiculous. It seems to me what we want to do is to make that area between the hotel and the street as nice as possible. I question whether fifty feet is enough to do that. Maybe the suggestion was to Geller at the last meeting of, of a hundred foot may work and that be landscaped. That may be better. But it's, I don't think either way, this is, is going to be screened in terms of hotel that size.
And I think that's up to them, right? So I think that, I think that what, if you look at the special permit, it says that it should be screened through depths. Um, and and there is no, uh, Mezataro Plan, I think is the name of it. We don't have that plan. So I think any any distance we. Agree on tonight, we're gonna have to request that the plan be a landscape plan be done that provides substantial screening. Um, utilizing indigenous hardwood and evergreen trees as noted in the special permit as well as in 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 the zone. And I think that they, you know, I think I'm asking if that's usually with those guidelines and and looking for substantial screening, it's gonna have to do the best they can to screen. Obviously, you're not gonna screen the top of it, but we're driving by, driving by or standing across the street, it might soften the view. And I I think that's really what the substantial screening is, is when you're driving by or walking by, it's it's not this big honking building right at you on the street. You know, I I mean, the they came back last time when I blatantly asked for a hundred square feet, they said, no, they can't do it. They can't lose any more parking. So it turns out that that it's actually eighty square, it's eighty feet, so they're twenty feet shy. Does it just, I mean. A five story building, like you said, I I, you know, I I I think that they should produce a a landscaping plan to show us how they plan on on filling in that buffer zone. But but I think Mr. Jemmy too, the other thing about substantial screening, you're gonna have color lights. I think the other thing, the other thing that you have to consider is in that parking lot. You gotta have a lot of colors. And substantial screening will really help any glare from power that's off of that off of that lake into the adjacent properties. And I think that's another key benefit of the substantial screen. Not so much the shade of the building, but there are other benefits such as lighting. And that's that's my big, that's my big thing. I want to make sure that. That that we don't impact that natural environment too much. And we make sure that whatever the depth we decided is, it's it's adequately screened.
So are we are we looking at, I'm I'm assuming that we're talking about tree protection within the current layout of the site compared to?
I think that's both. I think they're gonna have to add trees as well. I mean, if you have. If you cut the underbrush in your big trees, I mean, it talks about indigenous hardwood and evergreen trees, I think. I think that they're gonna have to provide a plan that protects existing trees and adds a lot of other trees to to demonstrate they have substantial screen.
And are we talking about that screening be within that eighty feet as the applicant did state that they could remove that one row of parking? So we'll be looking at. A a protection in a more substantive, more substantive landscaping plan within. Is that eighty feet compared to what is currently shown on the landscaping plan now?
I whatever that depth is, we have to assign on that, which which is something. In a special permit, we're gonna rely. Yeah, well, when you, when you know, when you, when you, when you get rid of that that rope, Pat, if you drop a scale on the plans, it's eighty feet. Right, but we need to determine what's substantial. I mean, we, I I think that should be. I mean, substantial for me might be very different too. I mean, I think that whatever is planted, there should there should be some level line. Evergreens, some evergreens that can tolerate, that eventually block, I mean, block headlights and things like that from from glare in the lake. Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree with that, Pat, but I, you know, I'm not gonna design it farm. I mean, they need to come back to me and tell me what they're gonna do to fill this in. So that we don't get glare from parking light, from car lights and everything else. Needs to be substantially screened. But what what depth is required to do that, I guess?
I would say from a minimum standpoint, they they're only allotted up to fifty. However, we're getting, I guess, an additional thirty feet that they're willing to. I get, I'm not saying the kindness of their hearts, but thirty feet they're willing to kind of add as upon that fifty foot minimum.
Well, respectfully, Mr. Ryan, I believe the fifty foot versus two hundred foot is an opinion, not a fact.
I'm sorry, what?
I believe the fifty foot minimum versus the two hundred foot minimum is a pending, not a fact, uh, respectfully.
In terms of the fifty foot buffer not existing in zoning currently?
I I believe this project should still be held under the two hundred foot buffer.
Sure, that's your call. I'm just telling you from a zoning ordinance perspective, reading the zoning ordinance, that's what it states, fifty feet in the planned development district.
The zoning ordinance did not amend the, uh, master plan, special permit, whatever you call it, uh.
I understand, but it amended zoning. Which is what this project is being held under. I don't wanna go back, I just don't wanna go back and forth. I, your call is your call, I understand.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, we are, Pat, we're sort of reaching, it seems to me some sort of consensus on this as we're wandering all over the place. That we're we're talking about a possibly eighty foot. Buffer with a landscaping plan with various trees to screen the area. Is that where we're going, folks?
All right, well, that's, I mean, this this is one, one issue we'll tackle it. I mean, I don't know if there are a few, but I just, I need. Just brought up, so I mean, we. You know, it's a special permit, we have the right to modify it, you know, to the, if if there are. If you read the the planned development district, if there are variations. On the special permit, we can approve them, we can approve them, it says that in nine point four, but. Back to my point, whether it's fifty feet or two hundred feet, the intent, the intent is to limit the impact and the net in in the in the scenic view. So when it's eighty feet or fifty feet or two hundred feet, I guess I'm open to all those. As long as they can demonstrate, they know eighty feet, they can, they can substantially screen. The, they can, it says, it says right here, it's a fifty foot minimum that the public ways. So as to substantially screen, substantially screen to me is. You know, pretty dense screen, so. No buffer strip should be required. And and if you go back to the special, no buffer strip is required by interstate highways or access banks. But if you go back to the. If you go back to the landscape plan, it should include, um. Indigenous hardwood and evergreen trees. If you go to our new site design standards, it talks about. Native plantings that are drought resistant. So I think we need to incorporate all those things into whatever that buffer strip we have and it is substantially screened.
Uh, I would just wonder.
Do we wanna come back to this one? Have we gone to a couple of other points? So, I don't know.
I'm just curious, is the applicant here and do they have anything to, uh?
I mean, I think we should, I think we should give them a chance to show us what what their intent to do is and and and. Either add or subtract to whatever planting they that they plan on putting into subs- substantially screen it in that. Fifty to eighty foot buffer that they're willing to do. With a tree protection plan also.
Yeah, I I would, I if we're moving in that direction, and my original thought was tonight was a hundred foot buffer. If I I would go with the eighty foot, um, assuming that we do get a landscape plan with a variety of trees and so forth, that that we would have to approve.
So just, we'll come back to that. Mr. Ryan, they just, I'm looking at the other conditions I need provided the drafts. They 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 offered mitigation. For, um, tree planting because they. That's one of the options that I've in our logic projects. That was an amount of twenty-five thousand in my notes, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. It was not placed in the conditions of my decision. Uh, I kind of provided very generic language in terms of this project because of, uh, just wanted to kind of get guide, get have some guidance from the board. In terms of this project, um, but that was, that was provided as part of the applicant's response letter, um. I don't know if it was at the last, I think it was the last meeting of the week, the meeting before, but I can pull that up, but they did offer. Uh, twenty-five thousand for compensation for.
Yeah, if I may, the 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 to clarify that, it it's the same. Model that was was done when they put in the flex building. Um, and that is that, uh, there was seventy-five hundred at that time, that they will deposit twenty-five thousand dollars. In the town account for the tree planting and tree care elsewhere in town prior to any trees being cut down. That was the original.
Well, my question, my, the reason I had a question in my notes after that was initially, initially. That was tied to all future development in the planned development district. If if that's the case, I'm not interested personally in accepting it.
No, I I, when I first suggested, I was just talking about this, this particular project, not the future developments.
I have a tie to this, this hotel and declaring for this hotel only if if they, uh. Is that, is that how you understand it, Mr. Brian?
Uh, you talking to me?
Right, is that?
I understand, I understand it as a tree cutting for the entirety of the property for now in the future. Uh, not just this particular site.
That wasn't my my thought.
Let me see if I can pull up what that letter was.
I didn't put it into a letter. I'm just telling you what I thought.
No, I'm just telling you what the applicant offered.
Yeah, what I'm talking about are my, our suggestion, not the applicant's.
I I think if we accept it and make it a condition, Mr. Brian, and and.
That's just what I'm thinking. It's up to the board to either agree or disagree. That's all.
Sure thing.
All right, the other, the other item I had, um. Was personally, I think, it's not staff's fault. Actually our fault, but. This whole site plan and planned development district and zoning changes that we've made are a mess up there, right? So. I think that this nineteen eighty eight permit. If there's any further development on this site or there's any further subdivision of the site. I think we need to have them come in and modify. Their special permit through the special permit process before we have any future development. Because this site, this particular lot could be further subdivided. And the intent of the planned about development district is to have predictable, well thought out, well planned, um, development. And for it to be very predictable. And I think that. You know, we get projects just drawn in and stuff there and there's no predictability, there's no master plan. Um, and that's actually our our fault for not requiring that earlier. And I guess we didn't know about this, um, process earlier on. But I just wanted to get staff's thoughts on that as a condition in the, the, um. Board, board's thoughts.
I can just throw in, that would be my major con- condition. That before any other. Development be done in this, particularly in this PBT district, that they come back with a modification. Of the nineteen eighty eight special permit. I think that has to be done. Now, whether mistakes were made in the past and whose fall is is irrelevant. I think that going forward. In order to make this a process that is not as difficult as what we're going through right now. That they have to come back to the planning board with a new modification to the, uh, special permit. I agree, Mr. Chairman.
What's, what is staff thought on that? Because this is not a special permit, this is a site plan. What are your thoughts on conditioning a site plan with that condition? Should we not condition a site plan on that and just? Put it out there or should we actually put it in the site plan decision?
Doc Bob?
The ice is getting thin, um. I I I mean, that's, I don't know that you can force. A property owner to come in for a modification. I mean, you certainly. You know, can make it clear that it would be difficult to get something approved without a modification, but I want to remind the board that, uh. The infrastructure capacity limits that have been established are close to being exceeded. They're not being exceeded by this project, but. From my vantage point. It would be difficult to do anything further there and not be over the hundred thousand gallons a day unless. The applicant found an alternative source of of water and an alternative means to treat wastewater. Um, so I mean, I think, you know, there's. Some comfort in that, but, um, I don't know, you know, legally. Whether or not you can condition them to come back. I mean, I understand why you want to do it. And probably makes a lot of sense to do it, but I just don't know that we can force an applicant to do that.
I mean, I think they know, they're just going through this process that that should probably be updated, so. I don't know if it needs to be in this decision or if any other projects that can be for us, we we just, you know, as as a staff level, we say, hey. You know, before another office building comes in or another hotel comes in or another. You know, um, flex building comes in, we have to update this special permit of this master plan, so speaking of a new master plan.
Um, if I may, I mean, I, Bobby, you're probably right. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with your interpretation, but from my perspective. We, I think we've gone through a lot of headache, which we probably wouldn't have had to if we knew exactly what our status was regarding. Site plan, special permit, and not, I would take the chance and have, uh. Town attorney defend us that that we we would have to require a. Modification of the special permit before any other buildings go in irrespective of water.
I agree, I agree with you percent, but I understand. This is not a special permit, it's not the special for the site, so I just. I, Mike, the reason I asked the question was, I don't know, I don't know if this belongs in a site plan decision, that's all. Is it, you know, is it a letter from staff, you know, later on saying, hey, you know. This project went through, you know, very bumpy, it 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 caused a lot of headaches for both sides and and others. Um, any projects going forward, we we recommend to. Update your master plan, even prior to any further development. I don't know if it's handled that way, you know?
I guess we could note in the decision, or if you guys pass a motion with, uh, consideration of a recommendation, that's gonna be. Noted in any decision. So I, you know, whatever language you establish within that motion is gonna be within this decision.
Yeah, and I mean. To Shane's point, and I think, Pat, to your point, you know. We have an idea of if there was gonna be further development out there, what that would be. Which is not currently allowed. So I mean, coming back in through for a special permit. May be the appropriate safety net as well to address that.
Uh, while we're getting staff opinions, uh, Mr. Really or Mr. O'Brien, um, can I get either of your opinions on the, uh. Adequate screening, uh, what do you believe adequate screening is and do you believe this current, uh, project meets that requirement?
So just to be clear with, though, McDonald, the the way the zoning remains, is it substantial screen?
Oh, yes, thank you.
I would, I would say that you would want protection of existing trees, ones that are, you know. Of quality to. Be, you know, protect existing trees, whether you, we're looking at a a tree protection easement or some sort. Um, within that buffer as well as looking at additional. Landscaping to kind of spruce up the grounds a bit, so.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we put it on a landscape architect? So why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we ask for a landscape plan? De- dependent on how many feet can we agree on this evening?
You know, that's what I've suggested earlier, I mean, I think.
Yeah, well, all right, but right, but that, but that, that that meets that, that has a direction to substantially screen. Protecting existing trees by mixing up indigenous hardwood and evergreen trees and using native plantings, all the language that we have. And then have the landscape architects certify. I mean, that's their job, that, I mean, they they know something needs to be substantially screened, but. That that their planting schedule is gonna substantially screen. The projects from, from, you know, adverse impacts, whether it be lighting or 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 the scenic vista or whatever it may be. So, I mean, I think that's the best way to handle. Yeah, I, you know, I, Pat, I I think I'd also like to have them, you know, not all landscaper, not all landscape architects. Um, no tree, no. Tree, a lot of them, they're not arborists, so I I I think that they should bring an arborist on board. To, uh, to pick out what trees would be. Suitable for protection, you know, versus you could have a tree that's out there that's. You you're walking out there thinking this is a beautiful tree, but on the inside it could be sick or ill and not a lot of life to it, so. Maybe they, maybe they supply, you know, an arborist going out there to. Say this tree stays, that tree stays, and then they can do a landscape, you can get your landscaper involved and do a landscaping plan. Well, the second one, I think it should be substantially screened, and that that should be confirmed by somebody.
That, uh, that kind of gets back to my previous question, uh, Mr. O'Brien didn't get the chance to finish, uh. Mr. Ryan or Mr. Really, do you feel like this project is as it stands today substantially screened?
Based, based on the current ordinance? No.
Yeah, yes, sir.
No, not based on the most recent landscaping plan as provided. No. So I would, I would, I would advise that we would, eh, as part of any condition that we would have a more, uh, bolted up, uh. Screening plan, um, regarding any screen that would occur between one oh four and the, uh, the eighty foot buffer provided.
Agreed. Thank you.
I mean, and, and he started right there, Shane. The intent is screening, right?
Well, just, just in terms of the most recent landscaping plan, it, it, it doesn't show any, there's no screening in between. One oh four and the building itself. There's some screening adjacent to the property at the corner. But however, that, you know, we could look at proper screening between one oh four within that eighty foot buffer. Um, in the building.
And, and just to be clear, I mean, screening, substantial screening to me is. Now, a lot of dense evergreens mixed in as well, you know, native dense evergreens mixed in to substantially screen the project, you know?
I think that a landscape architect needs to do that and it's like, and, and obviously attention should be given to the existing trees that, that can be saved that are in good shape. So. Um, I didn't have any. Other. I mean, the only other, uh, the only one note that I had from hearings where. Um, there is going to be a substantial amount of, uh, cutting and filling on site. Um. I think it was represented when I asked the question, so knowing, knowing we've had other sites with substantial amount of material had been taken off site. Um, it's turned into somewhat of a gravel, uh, operation. Um. Mr. O'Brien, it's your understanding that. The material that is going to be cut on site is going to be remade, reused on site. We don't think to condition any. Gravel removal operations or, or tines or, or dust prevention measures or anything like that. So something we should include that kind of this picture.
I would leave it up to you guys. I would assume that they would be taking any lumber off the site and not necessarily reutilizing it.
No, I'm not talking lumber. I'm talking.
Um, plus the lumber's going to come off site, but there is. Just wanted to decide the lots, just looking at site lot and my photos that I took and, um. Just, uh, Mr. Silver commented that, and Mr. Love had commented that most of the material would be used on site.
Yeah, I think that's the one point that I should.
I don't think it's a site. Big enough to generate a substantial amount of. Gravel that would be worthwhile offsite. I mean, I, you don't know that there might be some that they have to lose just because they can't lose it on the site, but. I mean, I, what you're referencing.
I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm going along with the truck loads as expected, that we track spring material in and out, but I think. I think it should be noted that if. If it does become, if they do have to remove a lot of. Number of cubic yards of, uh, gravel that will bring in a lot of materials, some dust mitigation and, um. You know. Hours or whatever it may be should be, should be in there because I know we've, normally we've had some complaints and complaints from other projects of. Lots of material coming off and really no oversight of conditions on that.
Yeah, I don't see anything noted on the plan about gravel. Being removed offsite, but I'd, I'd leave it up to the board in terms of, uh. Making that condition.
All right. So everyone talk about conditions, like a back to anything like.
Yeah, I guess a, a minor one. I, I would like, uh, they, I believe in their plan. They have, uh. Um, the, the EV charging station be ready. I think EV's charging station should be put in as part of one of the conditions. At least three, maybe four.
Let me just confirm.
I would agree with that.
I think they have, uh, EV ready. I think.
I just want to make sure it's not part of it. Okay. So the, so just can we have a discussion on that? There, there was EV parking noted on the plan. Um, however, the location is within the area that the parking area that would be removed. So I guess we would have to note that the EV, the four EV charging areas provided would have to be relocated on site.
But, and that may be actually put in place.
Sure thing.
Yeah.
What do we, what do we think, guys? Let's go back to, let's try to fill up some of these. Let's go back to, um, buffering. What are we looking for?
Well, it sounds like we're. Um, we didn't actually vote on a consensus, but it sounds like we're talking about an eighty foot buffer with a. With a landscaping plan with, uh, trees that are designed to screen the, the, uh, hotel. Based on a. Expert giving us the, the, uh, they have, they have come back to the, the planning board with the plan, the screening.
I don't think I could adequately condition, uh, this project to include, uh. Subvision screening.
Do you, what do you think? Just kind of get to some sort of consensus from the thought. Do you think depth is going to help screen it? Do you think tree height? I mean, what? I, I think the intent of the two hundred, you know, I, there is a lot of conflicting stuff, but I do think the intent of the two hundred feet. Was to provide substantial screening. Give them a lot of area to mix in a lot of different tree types at different. Levels, right? And, and different heights and, and different growths. When you shrink that down, I mean, you have less area for the plant to create that than a blocking. So. I think they have to demonstrate that they can achieve the same. The same screening of, of, of substantially screen in, in eighty foot versus two hundred foot. They, if they can demonstrate that. I guess, does it matter that it's two hundred feet versus eighty feet? If, if, if the same level of screening is provided.
I'd be open to that. Uh. I'd have to see in front of me, you know, um.
Well, I think that's the road we're going down. I think, I think we're, we're, you know, we know that they're probably going to be about eighty feet. We need to have them give us a planting plan and show us how it's going to, uh. Substantially screen the site.
Yeah, es- essentially we just see the plans.
Yeah, it, it, here's the way I look at it. It is, it is a lot in current zone, right? But it is a variation from the special permit. So we want to achieve the same, the same intent that was in the special permit. On the last, on the last, uh, on last stop. And if they, and, and they, if, if they're saying they can do that eighty feet, well, then do it and, and provide us with that, with that plan.
I would say with all due respect, Pat, I, I do hesitate to. Assume intent on the buffer from, uh, before it was born. So.
I know, I'm not trying to, I'm just, just reading the findings, right? So.
Right. Which makes sense.
The findings, the findings were, were based on. The visual inputs on adjacent properties, right? So I, I think one thing that we can't fix. Is that five store hotels are a lot, so we can't cut it down, right? But. I, I think, I mean. It's just my thought. I mean, I think the reason for the buffer there, uh, to run the figures to make sure it's substantially screened. So they didn't change.
You've gone around for twenty minutes saying the same thing. If you're going to condition it that they provide. Uh, landscape architect and maybe to Mr. Geller's point, include an arborist to. You know, determine what trees can be saved, what trees are healthy and what the plan is. Ask them to do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Agreed.
I would agree as well. I think it's a compromise. Good one.
How do we, how do we do that? Shane, I must have really without. I mean, I would like to, is it, that would be a condition, correct? We don't need a condition.
Articulated just that way. That if any approval is conditioned on the fact that they have to provide. A satisfactory prepared plan by a landscape architect and a licensed arborist. Showing that the, whatever the buffer is, whether it's eighty feet, is substantially screening the project.
Yeah, and that could be noted as prior to, prior to endorsement, prior to construction, et cetera. You can note it on a certain timeframe within the development of this project.
And just, just, that's something I can come back before the board. Have a meeting just to, I mean, that's, that's something we can take up on the board business, correct?
Yeah, and you're not going to endorse the plan. I mean, there's, I think there's, um, there's enough safety nets in there that, um. Yeah.
I'd just like to see the plan in a public meeting, just so that the whole board can see, you know, what's been proposed so we can, we can all give our opinion. Instead of one person stopping in and me stopping in and Shane looking at it, I think. I think this is a big project. It's important that we get it right. It's important that we protect the, the others and we're fair to the developers. So I think that.
Yeah.
I think it should be, it should be provided to us and considered in a public, public meeting, not a public hearing, so to speak.
I would ask, I mean, I think that if that's the way you want to go, I would, you know, again, it's part of that condition request that. The landscape architect do the presentation.
Yeah, I would just, just to add on to that, Pat, I would just note a certain part in the process where you would expect that. You know, prior to construction, prior to endorsement, prior to construction endorsement plan, CO.
I'd say prior, I mean, I would like prior to endorsement. They have time. I mean, they're going to have to go to Concom. That's going to take several weeks or months perhaps. So I think that's something that they could do between now and. And try it to endorse it, right?
Well, I worry about it. They just have to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a condition and they still, you know, you're right. They have to go to Concom. You still have the MIPA process going on.
Yeah.
Always did better than those, the first row of spacing with the street. That's going to be removed. It gets us back to eighty feet. Is that correct? And still Brian?
Yeah, I just, I, I couldn't hear the first part of that, Pat. We're having a difficult time.
It's, it's fourteen feet. It's what, it's, it's, uh, fourteen spaces, I believe in front. The first, that whole first row is going to go. I'm going to condition that. That brings it back to eighty feet if we, if we decide to do that, but they have to, they have to, they have to meet the condition that we'll deal with the screening itself. Right?
Yes. Well, yeah, we would need, we would need. Updated plans showing the removal of those spaces prior to endorsement as well as a substantial. Uh, tree protection plan as well as a relocation of. The EV charging and relocated, uh, EV charging stations to be relocated.
Yep. Correct.
Located and installed.
Yes, located and installed.
Uh, forgive me, Mr. O'Brien. I'm unfamiliar. What is a tree protection plan, uh? Could, entail?
Well, it's, you, you would also have a, it's a tree, like a tree protection plan would be, it would be establishment of a, a certain area. Within. Um, that would be going with the, 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 the property. That wouldn't allow the applicant to remove certain trees without kind of. It, it would, it would, it allows for, uh, protection of the board and allowance of, like, similar to like subdivision. When someone puts in street trees along there, there's typically a, a tree easement protecting those trees. So. When the subdivision is built and someone can't just cut them down, there's. That they'd be in, I guess, violation of the, the subdivision in that particular case. So allows for better protection. For trees and it's noted on the plan as a tree protection plan comparative to not mentioning at all.
So it's essentially got no touch zone for trees?
Essentially like a tree easement.
Okay. Thank you.
Pat, and just for our purposes moving us along, can I make a recommendation for, uh. Conditions that we can either agree or not disagree on?
Well, just, just real quick, Mr. Jimmy. So when making the motions for the trees, right? But are they in the buffer area? Why, and I agree with Shane, whatever's there should be protected and added to. But why wouldn't it, why wouldn't we just take the, the language right from zoning? This is the project area shall include a blank minimum that's buffer strip. The public waste so as to substantially screen the use of the premises and adjacent properties. And then we can add, um. Then we can add, you know, it has to be done by every landscape architect. Um, has to be, has to, uh, maintain, um, existing healthy trees. Has to be presented to the board, you know, from approval at a public meeting by the landscape architect demonstrating, demonstrating the goal. And, and that can be the condition, but we just have to fix, fix the number of feet.
Yeah.
So. With what number of feet? Do I go with the eighty?
I prefer more, but I'll go with the eighty.
I mean, personally, I'm not going to approve anything less than two hundred, uh.
I think the eighty is a compromise. It would be, I would go with that.
I'm fine with the eighty and, and I would still like an arborist to go in and look at some of those trees, even though they've got existing trees to stay. I'd like for them to be, you know, inspected.
Yep.
Okay, like, you know, I, I'm, I'm with Mr. McDonald. I mean, I would love to see the two hundred. I think the intent was always to be two hundred feet. I think this got past eighty, but if they can achieve the same level of screening at eighty feet, I'm okay with it. So. I mean, I'm not okay with it, but I'll go along with it.
I mean, I'll look at what are they propose, but, uh, yeah, it will be amenable to less than that.
Well, that, that would be a condition that we would consider in addition to, to Mr. O'Brien's standard conditions. The next condition we'd consider would be. The twenty five thousand, is that correct?
I would, I would put that, yeah, I would put that in there, but it doesn't have to be next. It's probably last, in my opinion. I would put the, uh. We have the, the, uh, screening, we have the tree protection plan. Those are critical. We have EV charging stations moved, workable charging stations. We have, um. Um. I think we should, I'm not sure how it would be worded, but I, I think something should go in there. Regarding any future plans have to have some sort of. Modification to the nineteen eighty eight permit, whether. How that legally has to be worded, I don't know, but something's got to go in there.
Can we do that?
I, I agree, right? And I, I think. Nothing else could go forward up there. And I agree with Mr. Really, there are limitations with the, the infrastructure, I think.
You don't have to condition it. You can put it in as a recommendation in the decision. That they do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, any project should, should modify the. Special permit prior to. Something else.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Jimmy? I mean, I don't think anything can go forward up there as Mr. Roy said with the water sewer capacity.
I, 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 I'm not sure I agree with that. I mean, uh, the Mr. Carney had pointed out he'll drill well, uh, or if he, if he reaches, reaches a. Restriction. I, I'm not, I, I don't think that's.
Well, I mean, and he's, they're entitled to do that. I mean, and, and, you know, again, the, the limitation is that the town's responsibility to provide. A hundred thousand gallons of water and the town's responsibility to treat a hundred thousand gallons of wastewater. Um, so if they found an alternative source for water and wastewater, um. Potentially they could do additional work out there and then that might trigger, you know, as we said before. Uh, them having to get a special permit, but.
I understand. I'm just saying that we don't know the future. I'm just, I'd rather see some protection. Even though it may have to be go, go through, uh. Town attorney or not, I, I just rather see that instead of assuming that it's going to be, it's going to stop them from developing. I, I, based on. What they're saying, they don't intend to stop. They were.
But, but I think as Mr., as Mr. Ruler said, I, I don't think we can make that a condition. I think we can make it as a recommendation in our findings for them to do. I don't know if we can legally. Tell them to do that.
That's what it, um, that's how I am understanding it as well legally, just by saying that it was thin ice and, you know, we would. You know, the most that we can do is a recommendation. Is that fact? A fact, Mr. Really?
Yes.
I think that should be at the end of the findings. It's really my findings of this site plan, but. All right, um, Mr. Jimmy, back to you. Any other conditions? EV?
No, the, the main thing is the screening, which we, we've discussed a lot. Um, tree protection plan, EV, twenty five thousand, um. And the, uh. Recommendation about changing the special permit.
Just be crystal clear. I mean, the twenty five thousand should be for, for the, the, the clearing for this project. Only other lots of.
Exactly. It's for this project and as, as the other two times we got money. Exactly. It's for this project and as, as the other two times we got money. It's predicated on the fact that they deposited that money prior to cutting one tree down.
Well, we, we already saw on site that they've already got trees.
No, no, this is, this is for when we, we approve. It's happened, but they've done it before. It's worked out.
In the past, we've, we've asked for, um, receipt of a check prior to a, I believe it's a pre-construction meeting. Um, I can only note that on my experience from nine hundred Bedford Street.
Um, any other conditions that we'd like to consider? Do we want to put something in there, Shane, about, you know, wrecks coming in and out and dust, just to put it in, 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 in hours for. Materials on and off site, just to protect the, um, residential properties of this street?
Um, I hope dust doesn't go that far. Um, but I do know on the plan that, um, there should be clearing at least, um. I believe it's fifty feet along Old Pleasant, Pleasant and, uh, Lake Shore Center in terms of, uh, cleanup. Um, but if, if you want a proper erosion control plan, which will come, we can ask for a proper, uh, erosion control plan. Sedimentation control plan, um, which I believe is provided, as well as a construct, construction detail, um.
I think that's important. It's an area, you know, critical environment of concern. You know, we don't want silt to wash into the lake or the, the perennial or intimate stream, whatever it may be of the wetlands, so. I think that we would want to, uh, ask for those erosion control plans and stuff like that.
Yeah, let me just check. I believe, let me just make sure that. There is an erosion control plan, um, provided from Silva Engineering on sheet eleven as well as a construction detail sheet. Um, so we just probably advise them to adhere to the erosion control plan as, uh, as provided. Now, it is noted, there is noted dust control on there as well. So there is no, there's noted dust control, pavement cleaning. Entry and exit points, um. Which are all located, uh, along Lake Shore Center. And there's no, um, entry points from, there's no entry points from Old Pleasant. The, the entry of all construction vehicles would be. Um, from Lake Shore Center.
Yeah. So, Mr. O'Brien, before we vote, uh, uh, consider a vote, uh, uh, what? Do you want us to recap those conditions we went over? Do you think you can handle drafting those and we can review them together before I, I sign it? Oh, what are your thoughts?
I'll speak for Mr. O'Brien. We can, we'll go back to the tape.
Yeah, I have noted, I have everything noted down here, um, in terms of EV charging material kept on site, erosion control prior to endorsement. That we receive a pre, uh, tree clearing, tree protection plan, landscape architect, arborist, um, the spaces, uh.
I know I probably said it fifty-four times, but I, I just wanna make sure that. It is substantial screening, right? And that's, that's what, if, if we're, if we're, if we're modifying that special permit. They, they need to achieve the same goal of substantial screening in that eighty feet.
Sure, you missed your, you, you signed the decisions, Mr. Chair.
Just for the fifty-fifth time.
Sure thing.
Just, just to be clear, why don't you run that by again, Shane?
That, uh, Pat signs the decisions? No, um. It would be the, uh, removal of those fourteen spaces, uh, along the front of one oh four and eighty feet, there would be a. Uh, a substantial landscaping plan provided to us, um. Prior to endorsement, which includes a tree protection plan.
Not a substantial landscape plan, a subs- landscape plan that provides substantial.
Landscape plan with substantial screening.
With an arborist, with an arborist siding the trees.
Sure. Um, as well as, I believe it was noted by, there would be tree clearing in the receipt of, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, prior to construction. A, uh, note that material will be kept on site. Fourteen EV charging stations to be relocated and installed.
Fourteen, four, four.
Four, no, I'm, I'm sorry, fourteen removed or. EV charging restu- stations to be relocated and installed on site. A recommendation that in further projects in the area, that a modification of the special permit and master plan be completed. And whatever else you guys may have. Along with the other general conditions I provided to the board.
I would just say for the EV charging, uh, stations, it should be, uh, at the time of construction, the building, uh. The language you provided has a legal room, which I don't think you need.
Prior to occupancy?
Yes, that'd be great.
Perfect, okay.
So if there is a motion either way, so we don't have to repeat this one more time. The motion can include all the additional conditions and language that were just discussed.
We've been here this long, Bob, we can repeat it a few more times.
I, I don't wanna get to fifty-seven.
All right, so, and, and before we take the motion, uh, Mr. McDonald, I mean. Like, Mr. O'Brien can tell you, I mean, he probably hung up the phone and said some bad words after I called him a few times this week, debating with. This, um, subject and it, I, I mean, I just wanna get it right, so, and I, I don't like, I don't like how it's settling out, but. I mean, there's three conflicting things there and if, if we can get it screened, I think that's what the goal is, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would agree that. I'm still a no vote on this one, but, uh, yes, I, I agree with your, uh. Sentiment there.
I think we're trying to make it the best we can, yeah. All right, so if this is nothing else, we have, um. The public are exposed, so we have a set of conditions by Mr. O'Brien and all the items we just discussed. Uh, is there a motion either way on the project?
Sure, I'll make a motion to deny the special permit review.
Mr. McDonald, if you're making a motion to deny, you need to state the findings of fact as to why you're denying it.
I'm sorry, this is, this is a site plan review, not a special permit.
Ah, sorry, yeah.
Right, so, so, I mean, maybe you have to have a second.
Right.
But my reason for denial is I do not believe I could adequately.
We can talk about that in discussion, so. Do we have a sec, do we have a second on the, um, motion to die? All right, if you have no second, do we have another motion?
For purposes of discussion, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve based on the, um. Conditions, the, the regular conditions that we have for the planning board and also the special conditions that were stated by Shane. Um. Without going through them all over again.
I have a second, Pat. I just didn't.
May I, Mr. O'House? So, not a discussion, so, Mr. McDonald, I didn't mean to cut you off, but now.
Completely appropriate. Uh, my reason for denial is, uh, I don't believe I could sufficiently, uh, restrict this project. Uh, or, um. Sorry, what's the word? I'm a little sick here. I don't believe I could sufficiently, uh. Condition this project, uh. To the level that would be required for it to be good for the town. Uh, I'm following the, uh. Prudential versus Westwood Board of Appeals ruling here, uh, which is my grounds for denial, um. I just don't think, uh, we can make this current proposal work, uh, so that is my, uh, reason for denial.
For, for the record, Mr. McDonald, can you cite the, I mean, you cited the name of the case, but can you cite where that case was?
Yes, sir. Uh, Prudential Insurance Co. of America versus Board of Appeals of Westwood Massachusetts Appeals Court nineteen eighty-six. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Uh, is there any other discussion on the project? So, you know, I'm, I'm gonna support the project, I, I. I think it, I'm hoping it's a good project and there's a lot of other good projects up there. I, I just think that. There is a lot of conflicting info and, you know, trying to do the best thing with, with the information and the legal advice that we've gotten. And, and the good staff advice, even though I've battled Shane a few times on this, I, I appreciate his input. And I think if we get a good screening plan, um, and get some of these other things addressed and, and it'll go to Concom for environmental review. Um, and people have another opportunity to talk there, right? I, you know, I, I think we've done. The best we can with what we have before us, so. Anybody else?
Well, well said, Tom. I agree.
Yep, I would agree with that completely. Uh, Seth's done a great job, even if, uh, came to, uh, different ends on this one.
If there's no more discussion, we have a motion and a second. I'll take the local vote. Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. O'House?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Thank you very much to, um. And all the abutis and citizens that participated as well as the, um, the developer. Thank you. All right. Um, next up on the agenda, item three, other business. Um, we have a number of minutes from November first, November fifteenth. And we had a site visit, um, on August fourth. This was to the, um, hotel site. Um, do we? Do we have a time to redo these minutes? Is, is everybody, um, comfortable with them? Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion approved.
Your motion, I miss McDonald, do a second? I'll second. Subject to roll. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And then Geller?
Yes. Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Yes. We know. Uh, we've all agreed, uh, we don't need to go over this again, but just a reminder. Um, next. Next Wednesday, actually, your tenth, we have a zoning amendment to consider would be. Um, CD staff, uh, CED members of the council along with staff. Um, that's at what time, Mr. Williams, Mr. O'Brien?
Six thirty.
Yeah, we'll have the agendas, uh, posted and, um. Uh, posted and sent to the board tomorrow morning. Um, I know it's been, I think, posted for the CED committee. Um, but that, that I just didn't wanna have two agendas kind of running rampant, so I'll have that posted tomorrow morning.
Has it been decided that's, uh, in person or digital?
It will be digital.
Okay, excellent.
So you haven't sent out the meeting invite yet, right?
No, I'll have that sent out tomorrow morning, eight oh one.
Well, I think it's pretty confident that there've been, there's a lot of good things in there and I think it's, um, a lot of reading, so I would. I think, I think everybody got the link already, Mr. O'Brien and.
Yeah, and I posted the link in the chat just in case if anyone.
Hopefully, hopefully, everybody has, everybody has time to, to read it before the, the public hearing and so we can, you know, connect with the staff and.
Yeah, feel free, feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions or com- uh, comments individually, um, reach out to staff. We're happy to help.
I don't have anything from, uh. PPC, I don't think we met a lot of factors in that forum. Um, and, Mr. Jimmy, do you have a link to the tree committee?
No, other than I believe I mentioned, we will have, uh, a, um. Forum on trees. It was, it was gonna be February, but it'll be in March now. I'll let you know more detail.
Are there any other subcommittee appointees? No, that's just the two subcommittees we have. And so I'll turn it over to planning report, Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Roy.
I think we covered enough.
No, just to note again, I said at the last meeting, um, at some point I'll be on paternity leave, um, so, um. If you don't see me here, that means I'm on paternity leave, um, but I'll be hoping to be at the next two meetings.
Post your address in the chat, that flower is a wine delivery flower?
To the office, to the office.
No, I don't, I don't pay taxes in Bridgewater. I don't deserve flowers.
Uh, that's a nice little answer. Uh, I should note, I, uh, my daughter's soon in March, so I may also be out for a few meetings around then.
Congratulations.
Uh, thank you.
All right, so if we have, uh, nothing else, we have an adjournment, item four, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. Geller, do a second? And Mr. Jimmy? A discussion? Mr. Rohouse?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
No, I'm kidding, yes.
He's on the record.
You're, you're consistent tonight, right? Uh, Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.